Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call the order, the Everett City Council Meeting of December 10th, 2025. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Councilmember Vogel?
Here.
Councilmember Fosse?
Here.
Councilmember Tui?
Here.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Here.
President Schwab?
Here. And at this time, I'd like to ask Vice President Zarlingo to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. And this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Tui to read the land acknowledgement.
Certainly. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahupshi people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. So we'll move to old business. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes for December 3rd, 2025?
Councilmember Ryan, so moves.
Second.
Motion and second's been made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, President Schwab, community and council. I have a flooding update. Heavy rainfall in an atmospheric river has caused significant flooding across Snohomish County, including rising waters along the Snohomish River. Some neighborhoods have been or may be affected as the river continues to rise and as local drainage systems reach capacity. Our first priority is, of course, the safety and well-being of our residents and the protection of our critical public infrastructure. Over the past 48 hours, heavy rainfall has saturated our watershed. Forecasts show continued rainfall over the next 48 hours, pushing our rivers and stormwater systems beyond their limits. There is a potential for flooding that may impact the riverfront neighborhood in North Everett. Public Works may need to close Riverfront Boulevard tomorrow due to floodwaters, which make limit access to nearby homes. Updates will be across the city of Everett's social media platforms, and emergency alerts will be issued as needed. I do want to emphasize that there are no evacuation orders at this time. Conditions, though, can change quickly, and we are monitoring everything closely. If you live or work along the Snohomish River, please stay tuned to official forecasts and city updates, be prepared for possible road closures, and never drive or walk through flooded areas. Also, we are addressing potential flooding on Smith Island, which impacts our animal shelter and our water pollution control facility. The animal shelter will be closed until further noticed. A huge thank you to the community members that jumped into action to help evacuate our animals. Also, I really just want to extend my utmost gratitude to our Public Works team and our CERT volunteers for all of their work fortifying and preparing facilities at risk of flooding. They worked all night. They've been working nonstop for 24 hours, and they'll be working all night tonight. Our Everett Emergency Operations Center is now fully activated as of this morning. Fire, police, and Public Works teams will continue to monitor rising water, close unsafe roadways, assist with evacuations when and where needed, and check on vulnerable residents. Everett Cold Weather Shelters are also open tonight. Everett Cold Weather Shelter is at United Church of Christ and East Everett Cold Weather Shelter at Henson Hall. They're both open at 8:00 PM and close at 10:00 PM. I guess close for accepting folks, they're open all night. Everett Family Cold Weather Shelter at the Women and Children's Shelter opens at 4:00 PM and closes for intake at 8:00 PM. The Snohomish County Department of Emergency Management has indicated that residents on E.B. Island may have difficulty returning home tomorrow due to rising water and possible road closures. A wireless emergency alert was issued at 1:00 PM today. Although these alerts are location-based, residents outside E.B. Island may have still received the alert. We are in continuous coordination with Snohomish County, the PUD, and our regional emergency partners to respond to any infrastructure impacts and prepare for the next steps as the situation evolves. I want to reiterate to our residents that our first priority is your safety and the safety of our communities. Please follow postage signs and road closures. Even shallow standing water can be dangerous. Check in on neighbors and stay informed by following updates from the City of Everett and Snohomish County Department of Emergency Management through official channels. Together, your cooperation and caution will help keep our community safe as we move through the next several days of this weather event. A cruiser, as I said, are working around the clock to protect our community, safeguard infrastructure, and respond where assistance is needed. We are asking for patience, caution, and cooperation as we navigate this. Everett is resilient, and I know we'll get through it by working together and taking care of each other. And then I'll move on to just a couple of updates from our cool Everett Transit team. This month, we received the fabulous news that Everett Transit is receiving $10 million grant to replace nine of our buses with new hybrid buses. This is a big part of our replacement plan, so I want to congratulate our Transit team and Director Michael Schmider. Everyone who's part of that team, thank you. Everett Transit is also a few weeks into operating the Free Shuttle from the Everett Mall to the Walmart Shopping Center aimed at riders of Route 12 from the Casino Road area, but it's open to all. We've seen an uptick this month as folks get out for holiday shopping, and we're really honored and happy to be able to provide this Free Shuttle services to support the community. And due to the inclement weather, Everett Transit will be postponing and rescheduling the mall station grand reopening, and we will keep you posted as to when that is. And no further updates this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to public comments, which includes written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, comments must be considered in the same manner as oral comments. A person submitting either written or oral must name the city and residence to be part of the official record. And good evening, Angie. Could we start with written comments and then go to our public comments? Thanks.
Good evening, President Schwab. We received written comment in regards to the Outdoor Event Center from John Martin, Lisa Stermans, and Alex Schesser. And those were all provided to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. And we do have some individuals online that wish to speak. So we will start with Chris. If you could turn on your video and unmute, you will have three minutes to speak. There'll be a timer on the screen. And you can, if you could state your full name and city of residence. You can go ahead.
Hello, sorry. My name is Chris Jones. I live in Washington, and I want to speak on the priorities for the outdoor center, specifically number seven around supporting workers and labor. As a union member myself, I know the difference a union can make, and the city should use all of its facilities and especially, especially this opportunity to do everything it can to support labor and support good union jobs in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, if we could have just one moment here. Kathleen? If you could please unmute and turn your video on? State your full name, city of residence, and you'll have three minutes to speak in just a moment here. Okay, go ahead. Kathleen, are you speaking?
Hello?
Okay, there we go. One sec. Let me add a little bit more time if I can here.
Yes, my name's Kathleen Stewart. And I'm just, I just want to state on the billing practices of the City of Everett for utilities and billing at 21 days, which I have received several late fees that I do not pay because I, no other utility that I have charges late fees when you do not pay on the date that it's due. I'm unable to do that, and I have called on this and never gotten a an answer as to, other than it's automatically generated on the day that it's due, and if it's not received on that day, they send you a letter and then charge you a late fee of $5 for sending you the letter. I don't think that's a fair practice. I pay, I've never not paid. I've never not paid in any month that it's due or any later than five days after the date that it's due. And I do receive a receipt as soon as it's paid. So I don't know why this started. It just seems as soon as it went to meter billing and I requested a mailed hard copy so I could assess why it seemed to be different is when I started getting these notices and charged these fee, late fees. And so I am, I'm in support of this bill that requests that the billing be changed to the 45 days after it's due. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Melody, if you could unmute and turn your video on? State your full name and city of residence. You'll have three minutes to speak. Go ahead.
And I'm just protesting.
Sorry, Melody, we didn't hear the very beginning of what you were saying. Could you please start from the beginning?
Of course. My apologies. My name is Melody Smith. I'm an Everett resident, lifetime. I've owned my childhood home for 49 years. And it's my understanding that the Everett Public Works Management and the Everett City Council approved to start stamping the outside of the envelope past due. I received a past due envelope recently, as July, and it was only three days after the due date for my Public Works bill. I was in the hospital for three days for a heart attack from July 6th to July 8th. I'm still recovering from my medical event. I mailed my payment on Tuesday, July 14th, 2025, as the day it was due. It is well-known that the Everett Downtown Post Office removed its drive-through drop box for outgoing mail, in which it makes it difficult for those that are disabled or have a medical condition to get out of their car to go to a drop box. I'm requesting that the Everett Public Works and the Everett City Council modify this policy to extend the past due stamps on the outside of the envelopes more than three days after the bill is due, perhaps 14 or greater, to allow enough time for the mail payments to go in. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we have.
Okay, so is that all our speakers online? Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have in-person speakers? And do we have more than one item that they're going to specifically speak on?
Yes, so we have some that wish to speak for item 31 plus another item.
Okay.
But I do have other people that wish to speak that are not pertaining to a specific agenda item.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will start with Deborah. If you could please come to the podium and click the button on the base of the mic. State your full name, city of residence, and you'll have three minutes or five minutes to speak.
Well, good evening. Thank you. My name is Deborah Bramboardson. I live in Muckelteo. So it's lovely to see all of you. Good evening, Mayor Franklin. And I also wanted to say thank you to Councilmember Fosse for inviting me to speak about Domestic Violence Services of Snohomish County and some of the things we did with the funds that we received during the pandemic. I just wanted to let you know that, just a little bit, that DVS is a private nonprofit. Snohomish County is in our name because that's our service area. So we go all the way to the borders. And we were established in 1976 just by individuals who said they were tired of seeing their neighbors and friends and family members get hurt or even killed. They brought them into their homes. That wasn't safe. We built a, we had a 15-bed shelter. That didn't do any good because there was just never enough beds. So now we're 52-bed, private confidential emergency shelter for those in immediate danger from intimate partner violence. That's what we do at DVS. So thank you again. And just as a note, last year, in our fiscal year of 2024-25, we helped more than 22,000 individuals with various parts of domestic violence issues in their life and their family. So Mary was asking, or sorry, Councilmember Fosse, about some of the different things that we were able to do. One of the things that we did right away was bringing Mary Schoenfeld, who is an emergency management expert. And she said, "It's coming, that pandemic, and it's gonna be bad." And she helped to advise us because we house upwards of 13 women and sometimes 35, 38 children. And that was gonna be a big issue, and how are we gonna keep them safe? So those funds enabled us to purchase all that safety equipment we all were scrambling for. You know, not just the masks, air cleaners. We upgraded to hospital-grade air cleaners for our facilities. What else we do? We also had to put them in hotels because you couldn't stay together in a communal living situation, even though they had individual bedrooms. You were just asking for people to get sick. So we put them in hotels, so that meant we had to feed them. So we got hotel vouchers. Some of the money from Councilmember Fosse helped pay for food for them. They needed to eat. We had to work out deals, and we had to bring our staff there. There were a lot of additional costs, so that was terrific. We also had little kids staying in hotels. Boring, right? So they, we purchased a lot of educational-type toys and activities for them to do with their mom or their dad. We got vehicle shields, so when we were driving our clients, people were protected. The mask cleaners for the professional and all that other equipment. And it does this really, that's our number-one priority is safety. So keeping them safe, not just from their abuser, but from a pandemic, was at the top of our list. So that was really helpful. One of the things we did was hire cleaning companies, locals, small businesses to come in and do the deep cleaning that needed because when we shut our shelter, we didn't shut the shelter building, but no one was there except for staff. All of our views in a hotel. So when everybody was coming back, we decided we needed to do a professional scrubbing, basically. So we did that, and that was expensive, so that helped to pay for that. Again, keeping our client's safety and health, number one. Also, though, we also needed to do things remotely. And we had never, ever considered that before. We thought about it, but we did not think it would work because of safety issues. Our clients are fleeing because they're in intimate, you know, partner violence and danger, and they're looking for them. And so with the ability to work remotely, so now people, we can do Zoom meetings or team meetings and all those things. So at one point, we had 40 staff on a Zoom call singing "Happy Birthday" to each other, and that was pretty funny. But because of those tablets and things, our staff is still continuing to help people who are isolated. Index, we go to, oops, excuse me, Darrington, all those kinds of places. Also, a lot of our operational funds were, come from our three annual special events, and we lost 70% of that revenue. So that helped to keep our doors open because that's always our number-one priority, is those shelter services. So those childrens and the mamas are not sleeping in cars out on the streets because that's the number-one reason for homelessness for women and childrens in Snohomish County is domestic violence. So it could be your neighbor, could be your best friend, your auntie, your uncle. If someone's hurt, please let them know we're there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Doesn't matter if it's an atmospheric river or a blizzard. Our staff is there for you. So from the bottom of my heart, as a survivor, I wanted to say thank you, Councilmember Fosse, all the other, stop talking with my hands. And, you know, Mary Franklin, very supportive, and it really does make a difference. And so thank you again for the opportunity to come and share with you about our lovely facility and the things we do. I did have Auntie pass out our Community Impact Flyer, which shows all the different programs we offer, all free of charge. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if Eileen could please come to the podium, followed by Mary. Please state your full name and city of residence, and you have five minutes to speak.
My name is Eileen Simmons, and I live in the city of Everett. I'm also the president of Evergreen Arboretum and Gardens. And the reason I'm here is because Mary Fosse asked me to come and speak about the impact that her gift of $25,000 had on our organization. We are a 501(c)(3) organization, and we operate under the aegis of Everett Parks and Facilities Department. We have almost 300 members and about 100 volunteers who help us maintain and renovate our gardens throughout the year, as well as provide classes and events for the community, all free of charge. The mission of Evergreen Arboretum and Gardens is to create and maintain an inspirational and accessible arboretum that is acclaimed and enjoyed for its plant diversity, original sculptures, and fostering community engagement through educational opportunities and innovative events. The arboretum, which celebrated its 60th anniversary a year ago, is visited by some 60,000 people a year and has a lot of maintenance needs. We are an ambitious organization and always have more ideas for maintenance and improvements in the gardens that either our budget or the Parks and Parks Departments, as they will surely agree, can provide, which is why we were so happy to receive COVID grants, both for $25,000 from Councilmembers Brenda Stone-Cipher and Mary Fosse. We aligned our expenditures with, for the grants, with the interests of Councilmembers Fosse and Stone-Cipher and our mission statement, using the funds to renovate paths, help fund Wintertide Lights, purchase a new sculpture, and begin redesign of an aging entry garden. Specific expenditures included $28,863.82 spent on renovating the failing gravel pathways that run through the north end of the Small Tree Walk, through the Conifer Garden, and to the Woodland Garden and Maple Grove. A part of that project, Parks, as part of that project, Parks provided a bicycle rack, which arboretum volunteers helped install. All the paths in the arboretum are now handicapped accessible, and the bike rack provides a safe place for cyclists to park their bikes before entering the arboretum. $5,053.1 was spent on contracting installation of lights on some of our large trees in the arboretum as part of Wintertide Lights in 2024. $12,500 helped to fund a new sculpture, providing both a focal point in the newly renovated backyard garden and also turning a soggy and uninteresting area of the gardens into a significant feature. $3,283.17 funded the removal of overgrown plants from the area adjacent to the kiosk and the entry columns, enabling us to create a visually interesting entry garden that draws visitors into the arboretum. We're still working on the design stage of that project, but hope to begin installation in the spring. We also recently installed a permanent bookwalk just in time for Deck the Boughs, our seasonal follow-on to Wintertide Lights. The bookwalk was paid for thanks to another COVID grant, this one to the Everett Public Library, which in turn gifted the bookwalk to us. Installation was paid out of arboretum funds, and the library is generously providing the stories for the bookwalk, including this month's "Snowmen at Night" by Carolyn Buener. I hope you'll stop by the arboretum in December to see Deck the Boughs, a months-long event that fills the garden with color during the day using natural and recycled materials. And I invite you to join us on December 21st at 7:53 AM for a solstice walk through the gardens, followed by all ages craft sessions in the classroom from 10 to noon. On behalf of Evergreen Arboretum and Gardens, I want to again thank the city of Everett and the council for making these projects possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Rod. And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have five minutes to speak.
Hello, I'm Mary Klein-Stiveley, CEO at Childstrive. I live in the city of Edmonds, but I have worked in the city of Everett for over 15 years. Childstrive received funds from Councilmember Fosse for our Spanish-speaking Play and Learn Group, which is what I'm here to talk to you about today. Childstrive has proudly served this community for over 63 years. Our mission is to build on the relationship strengths and unique abilities of young children and their families by fostering social, emotional, physical well-being so all children can flourish. And I like to move when I talk, so I may be swaying and all that kind of stuff. So just go with me here. We live this, we live into this mission through family-centered, relationship-based services that support children's development, family well-being, and community connections. Last year, we served approximately 2,300 families, 39% of which live in the city of Everett. Our programs include three home visiting services across the county, a preschool, and two play and learn groups at the Village on Casino Road, a facility we've proudly owned for more than 25 years. Our why for doing this work for our youngest community members is because of brain science. We know that 90% of the brain develops by age five. This is a critical time in kids' lives. Our work has a direct impact on children's development and their well-being. Thanks to the generosity of the city council, especially Councilmember Fosse, for allocating COVID ARPA funds to Childstrive, we were able to meet a critical need in the Casino Road community by creating a play and learn group specifically for our Latinx families. Over the last year, we've hosted over 45 sessions with participation from more than 80 families, 80 different families. Highlights from the group include families feeling valued, feeling valued for having a dedicated space where Spanish-speaking kids and adults can come together who share a cultural background. The Village on Casino Road is the ideal location, allowing many families to walk rather than drive. Each week, six to eight families attend with one to two children, many returning regularly, including a couple of fathers who have really taken to the group. Parents really appreciate opportunities for their children to practice Spanish in a culturally affirming environment. Our facilitators speak Spanish and share cultural backgrounds with families. We are expanding parent involvement by inviting them to co-facilitate and enrich learning activities. All facilitators are trained in Kaleidoscope curriculum, which is the best practice for play and learn groups, helping families understand child development and support learning through everyday experiences. We collaborate with families and parents and partners at the village, including Connect Casino Road, to strengthen our outreach and engagement. And families have connected to additional supports, such as several have enrolled in our ECAP classroom, as well as had developmental evaluations through our early supports for infants and toddlers program. These funds gave us the boost we needed to expand into this underserved community in a way that reflects our core value of relationship. While the initial funding has ended, we are committed to sustaining this work and actively seeking additional resources. What has been especially meaningful this year is seeing how this group reflects what families tell us they want, places where they feel seen, welcomed, and connected. Many families who join us are balancing the challenges of raising young kids while navigating language barriers, transportation limitations, and confidence and skills, as well as increasing isolation and stress. Yet every week, we see children growing and developing. We see parents forming community with each other, families appreciating having a space where their children belong, where they can speak Spanish and hear Spanish from other children without judgment. And while the initial funding has concluded, the relationships built are continuing to grow. We are committed to continuing this work because families have clearly told us it matters. The impact is clear. Children benefit from developmentally-supported play with their primary caregivers. Children are building community, learning about child, parents are building community. Kids are also building community, but parents are building community, learning about child development and discovering ways to advocate and lead. As families connect and engage, our entire community grows. And together, we're growing stronger. Thank you for trusting us and your generous support in helping us launch this vital program for the Casino Road community. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rod, please come to the podium, followed by Terry. Rod, please come to the podium, followed by Teri. Is Rod here? Sure, no problem. So Teri, please state your full name and city of residence and you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I wanted to just briefly touch on a couple of things. The resolution establishing the priorities for the development of the Outdoor Event Center. I was thrilled to see that this resolution is being voted on tonight. Adopting this could ensure that our values and the benefit to our community are prioritized in this project and that I ask that it is adopted. On another note, I've been hearing from multiple neighbors about these that are very frustrated with the short timeframes to pay their utility bills and the aggressive shut-off penalties. And I would really encourage you all to consider making this more reasonable, especially in these time and days that a lot of people are hurting. And this is just one more added frustration for our struggling families. So thank you for letting me speak. Again, my name is Teri Ambergy. I live in the Delta neighborhood in Everett. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Steve. Please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hello, my name is Donna Breska. I'm a licensed civil engineer, a professional engineer license here in Washington State. I live on Fog Hill just outside of Snohomish, Washington. I have a client right now. I've been helping them get a permit for a land development project on Upper Ridge Road. It's been nearly three years. We've been trying to get the permit approved. My design, in my professional opinion, demonstrates compliance with all the code requirements and all the design requirements, but the review comments just keep coming and coming. I don't want to be overly critical of the permitting staff. There's a lot of good things in the city of Everett. I do permitting in over 35 jurisdictions and Everett's one of the better ones. The self-service or the walk-up counter is a really good resource. This particular project, like I say, I've demonstrated compliance with, with all the requirements. It's permitting. We're not doing like airplane design where I have to go on and on and on and prove to whoever's reviewing the permit to the satisfaction of their personal desires, everything about it. Once I demonstrate compliance with all the code requirements and design requirements, then the permit should be issued. At issue is the installation of a detention vault. I've designed it so it's four feet away from the adjacent private property line. If I haven't mentioned, this is on Upper Ridge Road. It's two duplex units and to be built behind an existing house. The review engineer, the review engineer's manager and a planning person and I met in person, it'll be four weeks ago tomorrow, where I felt I went above and beyond explaining installation construction techniques. I have over seven years of construction management experience. I should not have to go to this level of explaining how to install. That's up to the contractor and OSHA to make sure products, items in the ground are installed in accordance with safety regulations. My client paid over $5,000 for an unnecessary geotech report that said the installation would be fine, yet the reviewer chose to perhaps use a bias to pick it apart instead of looking at it in its overall context and pick out individual sentences out of context and have me try to explain, explain those. We're four feet away from a property line and eight feet deep. OSHA allows me to come up three and a half feet before I slope out. The contractor could use a trench box. It's an absolute non-issue. There are sewer lines that are installed 20 feet in the ground safely. I should not have to provide training to staff that perhaps haven't had the exposure or in their life path to have exposure to all this. I'm hoping somebody can help get this permit approved. It's been three years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Michelle. And state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Franklin, residents of Everett. My name is Steve Ose, born and raised here in Everett, lived here my whole life, except for my time in the military. I'm very proud of Everett, proud of the citizens of Everett. For 35 years, for over 35 years, there's been a partnership between Everett Transit, Fred Meyer and our union, Amalgamated Transit Union 883. Every Christmas season, we host an event called Stuff a Bus and we fill up the bus with food, toys, clothes for people in our community who are less fortunate than ourselves. About 20 years ago, we incorporated Volunteers of America into this mix and they take care of the dispersion and they help an awful lot with the collections as well. If you've ever had the opportunity to see a child receive a gift when they didn't think they were going to receive a gift, see a parent's face change as their child gets a gift when they didn't think their child was going to get a gift. These are experiences that can change you and they have helped me be a part of this. For, I've been involved in 29 years in Stuff a Bus now. And seeing the effect that it has on people has had an effect on me. We've had two weekends so far and we have one weekend left out at Fred Meyer at 136, 132nd 19th Avenue. Our bus will be out there Saturday and Sunday from 10 a.m. to 4 p.m. And the donations are accepted all day. We have a bus out there and you can walk them up, you can go in the store. We have what we call tear sheets, there's sheets that we hand out to people as they go in the store, things that are most needed. And if you can't hand something to somebody yourself directly, this is a way for you to be involved in getting things to people who do need some assistance at this time of year. Think about a child going to school. What'd you get for, for Christmas, Tommy? I got this brand-new truck. What'd you get? I didn't get anything. Those type of thoughts, they tear me apart and that's why I get involved. So I thank you for this time. I hope I see many of you out there this weekend and everybody is welcome. So once again, Merry Christmas and have a good night.
Thank you.
Michelle, if you could please come to the podium. Michelle. Followed by Scott. Please state your full name, city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, I'm Michelle Pendgrass, Everett, Washington, DMPCO for Precinct 13. I'm here on two things. So one of them is the stadium and I really like this last item, even though it's non, it's my birthday. But I keep forgetting words. Non-binding, non-binding resolution. I still like item number seven especially, requiring the stadium and all major tenants, including concessioners and vendors down the road, to agree to maintain a position of neutrality with respect to organizing efforts. I think like, I can't believe this isn't binding, but I really hope that we have a unanimous vote for that and I thank you guys for putting that forward. And then some thoughts on the water. I know our water bills are going to continue go up as they continue to fix the water mains. One broke into our basement or ended up flooding our yard and basement a couple of years ago. So I know that happens. I know they have to fix it. I know they're really old pipes. And I know they gotta pay for it somehow, but with these late fees, they really are paying for it with the poorest of us. You know, people, if you're a renter, you can't use auto pay. There's like a two-week turnaround on those water bills and it's definitely has the shortest length of time on the counter. We see the water bill come, we get scared. We open it right up. People who maybe are struggling to pay bills until rent or until their paycheck comes a little more so than my household, may, may not be able to just pay it right away. And that $5 late fee, I've been hit with it so many times because, because it just creeps up on you. It just doesn't sit on the counter long enough. And then on top of that, that, to hear that some people are paying a $52 for two weeks, that's ridiculous. I can't even believe that is happening. So with that in mind, I hope you all agree and we should do something about that before we continue to let this, our water bills go up on top of all these late fees. That's it. Happy birthday to me. Have a good day.
Scott, if you could please come to the podium. And please state your full name and city of residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Scott Sparling, Everett resident, 98201, what is that, District 1? I actually don't have much to say. I'm really kind of just dittoing what Michelle said for the most part. But looking at this, the event center, non-binding agreement or vision, I would like to say that Bullet 1 under the Article 7 regarding labor practices identifies some pretty excellent priorities, especially with regard to neutrality and non-coercion. I think that's actually labor law, but I could be wrong. Anyhow, sounds great. I look forward to seeing it implemented. And then again, also the water bill late fee of $52, it just seems wrong, unnecessary and counterproductive. But thank you and I hope to see the event center come along. Thank you.
Thank you. And the remaining wish to wait until item number 31.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to Council comments and we'll start off with Council Member Bader.
Thanks, Council President. Following up on my report about National League of Cities meeting, a couple of intriguing things I wanted to share with the council. One was, it's a couple of sessions about you, one on workforce development, the importance of childcare. Not sure exactly how we implemented, didn't hear any great suggestions there, but they emphasize the importance of that for workforce development and access to post-secondary opportunities. You know, again, something I think, as I mentioned in earlier conversation, we need to look at for South Everett, which is, you know, kind of halfway between Everett Community College, Edmonds Community College, and how we get access to helping those folks to access post-secondary education. Some interesting topics on housing. The, the one, one interesting strategy that I heard about was cities should look at their property that, that is, could be surplus property, might be a good way to increase a pipeline of properties out there on the market to help keep housing prices in check. So if we haven't done that in a while, I might want to ask the city to consider looking at our, our properties and what we might be able to surplus to enable some additional housing development. Of course, AI was a hot topic and that was mentioned in several sessions. I must say, having been to Association of Washington Cities Conference, I think the sessions I heard at AWC had a much better grasp on AI and how, how we could practically use that as a city. So again, I know our city staff are thinking about that and constantly looking at what policies we have around that. The final thing, or one or two other things, one, another kind of along the lines of AI was topics of data centers. And you can imagine that's a hot topic around the nation, many of those being built. You know, I think maybe we should look at what rules we have in place around those so that if a data center should come knocking on our door, we're ready to deal with that. There are good opportunities, but also they can present some challenges for us. And what one in particular was the large amount of water that data centers can use and should we be proactive in looking at having a policy for large water users separate from other water users so that we could be better prepared to handle if a data center were to start looking at Everett. And of course, I think my, my recollection is we had, you know, a fair amount of surplus water from Kimberly-Clark shutting down. So at some point, we might end up being an attractive place for a data center to look, look, look our way and be good for us to be prepared with policies in those places. So I imagine staff is probably looking at some of that, but would want to encourage that as well. Finally, had a very intriguing keynote about dignified discussions, dignified disagreement. You know, and I think obviously all of us are looking for ways to have civil conversations. I think we modeled that here on the dais, but fascinating presentation. And there was a handout I just wanted to share and I'll pass this down to my fellow council members about that. In fact, the guy who was the keynote speaker, he looked very much like he was from the Kennedy, the famous Kennedy clan in our nation, but it was a really good, good discussion on, you know, ways we should approach our discussions and, and what we hear from, from others as well. So just, it was a fascinating one, very well received by, by those in attendance there at NLC. So thanks again for the opportunity to go and thanks for letting me share that information. Other than that, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mayor Ryan.
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much to all of our public commenters and happy birthday to Michelle. And I just wanted to say congratulations on your retirement to Chief DeRousse. 31 years in law enforcement is remarkable and respectable and Everett is better and safer because of you. So we're going to miss you terribly, but thank you so much for your service to the city of Everett.
And I'll just say, before we continue, that we will be saying goodbye to Chief DeRousse at the next council meeting. So just, just so you know.
Council Mayor Bubley.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm glad we're going to say goodbye next week because I didn't have anything prepared. I have a question about the flooding and I just want to make sure I know that it's happened before because anyways, have the unhoused been notified of the flooding impacts? And you did mention that there's shelters available for folks that need it, but I know that there's people that live in the flood zone that don't have a house. So I just want to make sure that that's on the radar. So it's a real question.
It is. So we, we work with Snohomish County Emergency Management Department. Snohomish County Emergency Management Department reaches out to all the human service organizations. And so I believe that they are working much more closely with those organizations. But our social workers are also in touch with unsheltered individuals that are not in programs and yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure.
The best of our abilities, we are.
I know that they're also hiding. That was the question that I had. Man, I just lost everything. Thank you, everybody, for coming and speaking tonight and I'm glad to hear your opinions and whatnot and that's all, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Mayor Fossey.
Thanks. I wanted to start off with, I hope we get that person's contact information with regards to the permitting. I'm sure you guys are on top of it.
We are in contact with that individual and I will have our teams again follow up and we will share an update with you as well.
Thank you so much. I wanted to mention a few things. You've heard a lot of commenters tonight talk about some of the delegation of our ARPA dollars. With big thanks to Mayor Franklin, who originally, when we came on as a new council, gave council responsibility for some of these dollars and be able to designate different amounts to different organizations and causes in the community. And that's, and also Council Member Too, we assisted with the, the second round of bringing forward a vote on that to do another round of it again. And this was just really heartwarming to hear how much impact it's been having on the community. And I hope that we hear more about other organizations, about some of the good and some of the places that these dollars have gone towards. Thank you to everyone who spoke with regards to that. And I wanted to mention one other thing with regards to the flooding and what's being done. The emergency services recently had asked out for some assistance with sandbags. And I know that put out the information and I just want to say thank you to everyone in the community that showed up to assist with that. I know a lot of volunteers did and it just really warms my heart and makes me really like. it just really warms my heart and makes me really like thankful for the community that we're in, that people will show up for their neighbors and show up for these causes when they're just asked. And I just wanted to extend my thanks to everybody that did that. That's all, except for one more thing. I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include a first and second reading for an ordinance relating to the due dates for utility billing that I previously emailed to council.
Okay, motions are made. Is there a second?
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay, motion and second's been made. Is there discussion? Okay, do we have it? Do you have a copy of it? Something I could read in the record today?
I emailed it out to council. It's on there and we can talk about it more at the
Okay.
If if council wants to talk about it more now, happy to as well.
All right. Um, so on the right now, if there's, I would like to hold off discussion on the issue until we make it on the agenda, if that's my preference. So at this point, without further discussion.
It's to amend the agenda.
To to amend the agenda. Um, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Well, to read it out, I might as well do that here to make it official, an ordinance relating to due dates.
Well, I'll read it. I'll read it when on, how about if I create item thirty three and I'll read it into the record then?
Okay, good enough. Yes.
Okay.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, so motion passes will add to item, uh, we'll make it item thirty three. And we will put it on the agenda, I guess, after the briefing, after thirty two. Okay, and I evidently have a copy of it so I can have something to read. Okay, thank you for that. Um, Councilmember Fossey.
I'm done.
Okay. Councilmember Toohey.
Yeah, I just want to thank the speakers tonight and really enjoyed hearing what the ARPA dollars did. It was, I think, one of the better things that we've been able to do as individuals on council and would love to hear more. So I think you've inspired me to ask some more updates on some of the work that we did because I know it was some really great stuff. I want to just thank the Public Works and Parks people as well as CERT and the volunteers that I know are out there working really hard. I know a CERT person who was out there and really enjoyed working with everybody said that was amazing, the job they were doing. So let's just hope that it's enough and we want to thank them for all of their time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zarlingo.
Uh, well, yes, I'd also like to convey my thanks as as someone who's explored the sites of our freshwater treatment facility up near Lake Chaplin and also our water pollution control facility that does a stormwater and wastewater. Working through the night and also with certain volunteers. I think it's a strength of this community that we've got people who are willing to commit that kind of time for training and then commit the time on a really as needed basis, especially in urgent situations like this. So thanks to all those, the staff, the certain volunteers, the frontline workers. Also attended today, a meet and greet with the new head of the executive director of the Everett Housing Authority, Sarah Smith. And I wish her the best of luck in navigating the changing federal funding environment that's needed to figure out how to implement the park district, the old Baker Heights, the redevelopment of the old Baker Heights, housing development. Uh, also a note sharing today, our Parks and Built Environment Council Committee, Councilmember Vogel, we discussed the biggest discussion was in downtown parking, trying to figure out a way forward there that balances all of the trade offs that come with charging for parking or not charging for parking and having limited time, employees, business owners, shoppers, and this focus generally on downtown parking. I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. And Councilmember Vogel, you had one more item.
I did. Thank you, Councilmembers Zarlingo. Completely went over my head. You may have saw me go, what was I doing when Councilmember Fossey was talking? So apologize. Anyways, yes, we did indeed have a Parks and Built Environment Council Committee tonight. And like Councilmember Zarlingo said, we talked about the downtown parking update and also parks and naming parks and park amenities, naming policy and procedures. And I would like to let you know that we gave a recommendation to legal to bring that back as an ordinance to the full council. We had fantastic discussion and I was looking at it, but looking at something else. So thank you for letting me tell you all about that out of turn. That's all.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll go on to administrative report.
I have no report, except I do want to echo council's compliments to our staff. I think it is times like these where I am most impressed and grateful and appreciative of the expertise and the professionalism and the commitment. You know, we've got staffs now on twelve hour shifts, twelve hours on, twelve hours off. Our emergency management team and as the mayor mentioned, our public works, our parks team and many others. I should be careful because I ended up leaving people out, but it, we were, we have phenomenal staff with the city and I'm just so grateful for that.
Thank you. And how about from our city attorney's office?
Uh, no comment, no executive session tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll move into our consent items. We have seven, consent items, um, one through seven. Um, do I have a motion?
So remember, Bader, so moved.
Second, the motion.
Motion and seconds are made. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to proposed action items. We have three action items that have their second reading. Items eight, nine and ten. Are there any particular questions that council may have on items eight, nine and ten? It's the second reading. We'll have one more reading for each and each one of these. A final reading for these three will be twelve seventeen twenty five. Okay, seeing no questions on items eight, nine and ten for the record, we'll move on to item number eleven. First and second reading, Council Bill two five one two dash eight six. Adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Garfield Play Playground and Renovation. Third and final reading, December seventeenth, two thousand twenty five. Any questions from council? On item number eleven. Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to our next item. We currently have a public hearing open. And that is item number twelve, Council Bill two five one one dash six six. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance renewing and expanding the downtown Everett Business Improvement Area for the two thousand twenty six and two through two thousand thirty term. Angie, do we have anyone to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, at this point, we don't have any. Um, can I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Councilmember Ryan, some moves.
Second motion.
Okay, uh, motion and seconds are made to close the public hearing. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, so item number twelve, do I have a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Um, are there any discussion? Questions? Councilmember Bader.
I, I, just before we, although obviously be voting yes on this, but kind of echoing a comment I made earlier, I'm glad that the, uh, they're expanding the boundaries north and north of Everett Avenue, more in south of Pacific. But with, given the, we're renewing this for a five year term, I would hope before that five year term is over that they come back to us to look at an expansion to the west of West Marine View Drive out of fairness to those businesses on the east side of East Marine View Drive who pay to the east side of West Marine View Drive who pay into the improvement district to to mirror what they've been doing north of Everett Avenue and south of Pacific. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion? Okay, seeing none. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to action item. Action items, we have several. And these, um, the next eighteen items and third and final reading. And we will have to pass each one individually. So we'll begin with item number thirteen. Council Bill two five one one dash eighty five, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance establishing the basic salary schedule for employees of the city of Everett for two thousand twenty six.
So moved.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Okay, questions?
Do we need to make it an amended motion to incorporate the, I think there were a few minor corrections. Scrim. We're okay with?
Good question. Can I get something from the attorney's office?
Yeah, we're gonna still have a provision that allows the clerk to correct given errors. So that can be done after the fact.
Okay, and those a question, those changes that are made, correct? Okay. Councilmember Fos, I mean Vogel.
Would Ms. Candy Bartlett please enter?
You asked me very specifically if I had questions last time and now I just, I do. I was looking at it because that's what a good council member does. Um, and I noticed that Labor Administrative Services Director, I thought was new. But then I looked at last year's and I see that it was already there. And so could you please just give us a little primer on how and when new new, you can help me with the word, new positions, thank you, uh, new positions are added and or deleted. Because like, for instance, there hasn't always been a Labor and Administrative Services Director that was added a few years ago. And that's just the one that's in my mind. But then I'm also thinking about park rangers. Like, we know that we don't have any park rangers, but they're still on the salary ordinance. And so maybe just in general, when does council see that there are new positions added and how does council or administration take away positions?
Well, I'll start with the appointed ones because that the Labor and Administrative Services Director, which is actually my title. That is done through the Appointed Compensation Committee. We have an ordinance that allows staff to bring in those changes forward. Those are then incorporated into the salary ordinance that you then approve each year. The ranger is an AFSME position. It's still one of the classifications. We actually do still have a ranger that's at Public Works. The park rangers that were in the Parks Department are no longer there, as you know. But we do keep classifications within the salary ordinance in case we do bring them back at a specific time later. So there are other positions on the salary ordinance that may be filled or not filled.
Thanks. I just know I've learned so much in these past few years and I knew that it was in your willhouse to answer, even though I didn't ask in an email. So thank you for letting us know. That's all I have.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions from council? Okay, here and done. We are on item, I bet I get this. Thank you very much. Item number thirteen. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
She just stepped out.
Excuse.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, item number fourteen, Council Bill two five one one dash six four, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance vacating the remaining alleys in the block bounded by Rockefeller Avenue on the west, Oaks Avenue on the east, Pacific Avenue on the north and Thirty Second Street on the south. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second's been made. Any questions from council?
Just a quick comment that this is part of our providing more housing in the city, which we need.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Zarlingo. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, council, item number fifteen, Council Bill two five one one dash six five, third and final reading. Adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Element Shelter Fire Sprinkler Main Distribution Repair. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, seconds been made. Are there questions, comments? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number sixteen, Council Bill two five one one dash six seven. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Twentieth Street CIPP Sewer Linings. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second's been made. Any questions or comments from council? Hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number seventeen, Council Bill two five one one dash six eight, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Third Avenue WQ Treatment. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second's been made. Are there any questions? Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. On to item eighteen, Council Bill two five one one dash six nine, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Beverly Lake WQ retrofit. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second's been made. Is there any questions or comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. On to item nineteen, Council Bill two five one one dash seven zero, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Evergreen Pump Station Upgrades. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, seconds were made. Question or comments from council? Seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. And councilmembers, please keep track for me. Item number twenty, Council Bill two five one one dash seven one, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled that'll go to my other notes here. Didn't make that one. Entitled Third Avenue WQ Treatment Fund. No, which one?
One, four, five. Fund one, four, five, non motorized improvements, fund three oh three, program one eighteen, as established by ordinance number three seven, three nine dash twenty.
Thank you for the record. I agree since I didn't have my notes, I appreciate it. Is there?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and second. No questions. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes, and we're on item twenty one.
Yes.
Council Bill two five one one dash seven two, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Water Filtration Plant Emergency Generator Replacement. Their motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion, second's been made. Any questions or comments from council? No, hearing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number twenty two, Council Bill two five one one dash seven three. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Water Main Replacement Y.
Move to approve.
Second, the motion.
Motion and second's been made. I've seen no questions or comments. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number twenty three, Council Bill two five one one dash seven four, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance creating a special improvement project entitled Wiggums Hollow Playground Repair.
So moved.
Motion and seconds were made. No question, questions or comments? Okay, clerk, please take the role. Item twenty three.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number twenty four, Council Bill two five one one dash seven five, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing special improvement project entitled Hundred Street Southwest Improvements.
So moved.
Second, the motion.
Motion and seconds were made. No questions or comments from council. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Uh, item number twenty five, Council Bill two five one one dash seven six, third and final reading. Adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled two thousand and twenty three Federal and Pavement Maintenance Overlay.
Move to approve.
Second, the motion.
Motion and second's been made. No questions or comments. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Toohey.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number twenty-six, Council Bill two, five, one, one dash seven, seven. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled California Street Pedestrian and Bicycle Corridor.
So move.
Second the motion.
Motion and seconds been made. No question.
Go bicycles.
Okay, after that, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number twenty-seven, Council Bill two, five, one, one dash seven, eight, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Casino Road and Fifth Avenue West Pedestrian Safety Improvement.
So move.
Second the motion.
Motion seconds been made. No questions or comments. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number twenty-eight, Council Bill two, five, one, one dash seven, nine, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Citywide Innovation Safety.
So moved.
Second. Second.
First and seconds been made. No questions or comments? Clerk, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number twenty-nine, Council Bill two, five, one, one dash eight, zero, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Citywide Safety Flashing Yellow Arrow Improvements.
So move. Seconded.
Motion seconds been made. No questions or comments. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Item number thirty, Council Bill two, five, one, one dash eight, one, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance approving the appropriations of the two thousand and twenty-five revised City of Everett budget and amending the ordinance Number four, one, one, two, dash, twenty-five.
So move.
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Motion seconds been made. Are there any questions or comments? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Okay, Councilmember Vogel. I mean.
What?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Fossey. Ooh, that was a lot.
Do you need me to make a motion to?
Well, I thought you would want to read.
I make a motion to adopt a resolution establishing the priorities for the development of the Outdoor Event Center.
Okay. Is there a second?
Councilmember Ryan, seconds.
Is there anyone from the public that wanted to speak on this end?
Yes.
Okay.
So if John could please come to the podium. John Klosterman. Please state your full name and city residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Well, season's greetings, everyone. My name's John Klosterman of Everett.
Did you, excuse me, could you push the button there?
Oh.
I don't think you're on mic.
Right on the base of the mic. There we go.
There we go.
All right.
You're on.
Okay, okay, okay. Hi, everybody. Seasons greetings. My name's John Klosterman of Everett. And I'm back. Did you miss me a little? No? Yeah, enough about me. I'm here to talk about the Outdoor Event Center resolution, particularly the Labor and Workforce Standards Section. I, it's my fervent hope that the resolution not only passes, but is honored going forward. Because it reflects the values of the voters of Everett who voted to support workers by passing the minimum wage initiative back in November of two thousand and twenty-four. And the voters of Everett are smart. I mean, they elected you. So I think they know that sharing money with workers in Everett would lead to more sales in our community, which would enhance sales tax revenue rather than letting it be extracted by corporations. And if I don't, I probably won't see most of you in the next few weeks, so have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have to?
Oh, no, you can leave it on.
Yeah.
Thank you. Michael, if you could please come to the podium, followed by Shelley. And please state your full name and city residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, Michael Hilliard, District Three from Everett. I'm here to talk about the stadium, specifically item number seven around labor. So we all pay our taxes that are going to be going forward to the stadium. But we're not going to be getting free beer. We're not going to be getting free tickets, free parking. But I think would be fair is that our neighbors, our community members are the ones who do the labor to build this stadium and to run the stadium. And with that, I think it's fair to have free childcare or childcare for them as well as appropriate labor standards, good working conditions, and not selling it to contractors from out of state. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. Please come to the podium, followed by Charles. And please state your full name and city residence. You have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name's Shelley. I live in Mill Creek, but I work in Everett for the last three years. I'm also here to speak regarding the resolution establishing priorities for the development of the outdoor center. We just walked over from the Labor Council, a group of us, to speak about how important labor is to this project. I'm a member of Akshmi Local nine, four, eight, and a state social worker, and I've personally worked to help strengthen union solidarity in Everett and part of the minimum wage campaign last year. The outdoor center is super exciting, and I want to keep in mind, I want, I'm hoping that it's kept in mind how this affects the livelihoods of Everett residents and that Everett has a legacy of being a union town. And I think it's, I think it's why Everett is just really like a beautiful place. And then I said, excuse me, sorry. I support the labor priorities set forth by Councilperson Fossey, Ryan, and Schwab. And then also to add to the water situation. I'm hoping that that is considered seriously as I work with seniors and they live on social security and every dollar counts. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Charles. If you could please come to the podium and state your full name and city residence.
Charles Burgess, I live in Edmonds, Washington. I've been a lifelong resident of the city of Everett until this last year. I want to acknowledge Mayor Franklin and the Everett City Council for your incredible work on this outdoor event center. This is a, a big, big deal for the city of Everett. You can never put a price on civic pride. I grew up here in this city. I grew up in the North End, continued to live there for roughly thirty-eight years. And throughout the eighties and nineties, there wasn't a lot happening throughout the downtown corridor. When the arena was built in the early two thousands, revital, it began the revitalization of the city. It's been incredible to see it and the work that, that you and the foresight that you all have, have, have put forward for this event center is it's nothing short of amazing. So I want to thank you for all of that. As far as the labor standards go, I'm the Business Manager Secretary Treasurer of the Laborers International Union of North America Local two, ninety-two. We represent over twelve hundred working men and women here in the city of Everett. And with that said, we fully support labor standards moving forward with the Outdoor Event Center. We look forward to acting as a partner with all of you to get this built efficiently, safely, and with local members working on these projects. So with that, thank you so much for your time and have a nice day.
Thank you. And that concludes our public comments.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second before this council. Is there discussion? Councilmember Fossey.
Thank you. I appreciate all the work from my colleagues in the city on working on this proposal resolution. Our downtown has been shaped by changing leadership over the generations, public policy, the communities, and investment from private business. And I think our investment in this project, it's really, really important that it is something that will honor our past, but also create opportunities for the future. And so today we have the opportunity to create a legacy with purpose and clarity for our vision of what we see for Everett's Outdoor Event Center. And so this resolution is more than just a list of priorities. It's a commitment, our commitment to build a project that actually reflects our values. Who we are as a community and also who we aspire to be. And so we're grounding this effort in shared values of equitable development, environmental stewardship, cultural respect, and broad economic opportunity. In these times when we are seeing things that we have come to rely on at the federal level come into question like labor standards, environmental and health standards. These other things that are in jeopardy, it's more important now to actually put this stuff in writing for us in that this is the vision we see for us for decades to come. So we know that this event center is not just going to shape a block downtown. It's actually going to change the physical, economic, and cultural landscape of the city. And that's a big task. So these priorities that we've outlined ensure that this project delivers lasting benefits. It calls for fiscal prudence, timely delivery, and that we remain responsible stewards of public resources, and it emphasizes economic development that lifts local businesses as well as workers. It embeds environmental and public health standards to make sure that this project is a model for sustainable development and healthy urban design. It highlights cultural and educational value, honoring our labor history, expanding opportunities for youth and lifelong learners. And then also I consulted with our, the Talalib tribes and included language that you'll see acknowledging tribal heritage as well. These priorities ensure that this project serves everyone and that there's year-round access, affordability, community-focused programming, and it safeguards strong labor and workforce standards, reflecting Everett's proud history of supporting workers and families. And finally, this resolution underscores the importance of transparency. So you'll see some language in there about continuing oversight and ongoing community collaboration. And because this project shouldn't just be built in Everett, it should be built with Everett. So as we move forward, this resolution provides the foundation that we need anchored in the fiscal responsibility and guided by community values and focusing on that long-term impact. And I hope my colleagues will join me in supporting these priorities and so that we can deliver an outdoor event center that strengthens our economy, supports working families, honors our heritage, and creates a welcoming, thriving destination for everyone. I'm happy to read it if you want me to go into detail about what it says, but that's about three pages.
I think we're good. Thank you, though. Thank you for that very much. Is there any other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Ryan.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much, Councilmember Fossey. I'm very pleased to work on this and see it come forward today. Happy to support there. Had been a request from a community member to add a couple or add a little bit more beef to the transportation and parking infrastructure section. So I'd like to make a motion to amend Section Six to include a new bullet point that says implement transportation management programming to encourage attendees to walk, bike, and ride transit to the event center.
Okay, there's been a motion or a second?
Second.
Okay, and then just for the record, we don't have, could you provide that language to?
I will email it to our clerk.
Okay, could you go and just read that one more time?
Sure. So it's, it's about being the, I'll read it and then I'll add a comment to it. The language itself is implement transportation demand management programming to encourage, encourage attendees to walk, bike, and ride transit to the event center. So it's about intentionality of the physical and built environment around the event center to encourage more than just driving to the event center, which I think would help with a lot of parking concerns as well.
Okay, so on the amendment to the motion, is there discussion? Councilmember Bader.
Just curious, I think we have purposes from transit or maybe traffic that was that, is that something that would be happening anyway with a project of this size and would it be looking at? Okay, thank you for your, thanks.
Okay, so on the amendment, any more discussion? Councilmember Vogel.
As you heard me exclaim earlier, go by cycles. You can probably imagine that I absolutely would like this amendment added.
Okay, thank you. On the amendment, okay, seeing no more discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Councilmember Tui.
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo.
Yes.
President Schwab.
Yes. Okay, so back to the amended resolution, item thirty-one. Is there any more comments? Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. I would, I'm, like I said, I'm very happy to see this come forward today. I think it helps with ensuring the public what types of things they can expect from a project like this. I think it would be helpful, since we're coming towards the end of the year, to hear from administration about what some of the planned next steps are for timeline and briefings and votes and all of that fun stuff. I think that would be helpful for forecasting moving forward.
Okay. I have Scott Patterson here. He'll give you just a quick update on when you might hear more.
Thank you.
Mayor Franklin, President Schwab, council members, Scott Patterson, staff. We are at the point of sixty percent design in, in June of this year, six months ago tomorrow, actually. You approved a budget to move progressive design build forward. You approved a budget to move progressive design build forward, and we selected Bailey and DLR as our design build group. And today we are at 60% design, and we are value engineering the plans now, which means we're putting numbers to the project. And we anticipate to have those numbers very soon. Unfortunately, next week's your last meeting of the year. So we will be in front of you early next year with, with the budget and, and a full plan. So as of today, we have 276 pages of design work completed, which you can ask a lot of our friends in the unions. 276 pages of design work in six months is a hell of an effort. So our design team has done a lot of work.
Councilmember Zerlingo?
Well, I guess I, I do want to, for those who haven't been through all the details as we've gone through this, I do want to explain progressive design bill. The, the, the track we're taking in this case is to put more work in upfront because the, the sad typical experience of projects like this is design, bid, then build. And so often the bids come in so high that the project either has to be completely reworked or just fails and you've lost the investment you've had. We've chosen in the design, build, project, process to put more work, more planning upfront and more money upfront this way to give us a much clearer idea of, and, and a path toward doing what this resolution intends for us to do, number one, which is to make this fiscally realistic and buildable. And that that's why this has taken so long. That's also a, an investment that we've made. And from my standpoint, I think there's still some work to do to make all those trade-offs in terms of the value engineering you're talking about. Really what that means is figuring out what you're going to do, what's going to not be part of the initial build, what that's going to cost and how that's going to work out in terms of the way this will become self-supporting. So I just wanted to make that real clear. That's my view of these things. And also explaining why we've taken this time upfront.
Any other questions?
I would just like to add that council will see on the agenda next week some professional service agreement amendments. It is, there will be no additional funding allocation requested. And in most, all but one case, it's just an extension of the completion date. We had dated the, most of them through the end of this year and that for the reasons Scott mentioned, we need a few more months. And there is one that needs some additional compensation, but it is within the funding authorization that council approved in June. And so there were several buckets of money and so it's within those. But you can expect to see a few things on the agenda next week.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey?
Well, I'll be sad to miss the January presentation, but I will gladly watch from home.
Councilmember Vogel?
I just want to say thank you and I'm so proud of my colleagues and administration and labor and all the folks that came together on this to make it work and to look like it's going to pass this evening. So kudos to everybody working together.
Okay, any other comments on the resolution? I would, thank you very much. I would just say that a project this scale and the effects, both long-term and short-term, has many challenges and many opportunities. Some project like this needs vision and purpose that reflects our community. And I think this resolution reflects that, so. Seeing no more discussion, item number 31, adopt a resolution. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogely?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
Councilmember Tui?
Yes.
Vice President Zerlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item number 32. We have a briefing, approve a resolution adopting the 2024 Comprehensive Sewer Plan. And action item will be on the December 17, 25 agenda.
Good evening. Ryan Saus with Public Works. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Amy Campbell of our staff at Public Works. She's been with us 10 years. Amy's a senior engineer in our utility engineering group. Just tonight, as a matter of fact, of the various project actions you took that opened, closed, or awarded projects, at least three of those or more are, are projects that Amy designed or, and/or managed. She's also really been our backbone in our utility engineering group for doing in-house design. One of the things we've done for these kinds of basic capacity and replacement projects is trying to do that engineering in-house because it saves money for our ratepayers. And that's something that Amy's been really successful with. But tonight, she's here to provide a briefing on the 10-year update to our sewer comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Turn on your.
Yeah, turn the mic on.
Thank you.
Oh, I guess not. Okay, thank you. So Comprehensive Sewer Plan. I'm the.
Just a quick sec, because we're.
Is it?
Go up on the screen, right? So how do we do that?
I think maybe it disconnected at some point, so I may not be. So this is the zoom. All right, you scoot that mic closer. Thanks, ladies. So Comprehensive Sewer Plan, this has been a multi-year planning effort. We completed the draft in the end of 2024, so that's why it's called the 2024 Comprehensive Sewer Plan. And that included the SEPA review at the end of 2024. We got our DNS issued in February of this year. It went to Ecology for Review in January. And so we've, they took about four months to review and then we've been going back and forth with addressing their comments. So the last plan update that we did was in 2014, so that was 10 years ago. There isn't a requirement in terms of how often you have to do it anymore. It used to be every seven years. But we follow the requirement for the water system plan, which is every 10 years. So this keeps us in line with that. So some other planning activities that we've done since 2014 include the PGSF planning for the PGSF project. The Waste Pollution Control Facility Plan was completed in 2021. That document is in the appendix of this Comprehensive Sewer Plan. And then the CSO Control Plan for bringing all of our CSO outfalls into compliance. Those were completed since 2024, or those, the planning was done since 2024. And so this takes a, a big picture look and summarizes that and, and updates the information on all that planning effort. So we, in general, we follow the, the Ecology Guidelines. The requirements for what's included in the plan is, is listed in the WAC. And so the Department of Ecology reviews it to make sure it meets those requirements. I actually got the formal letter of approval from Ecology this morning approving the document, so that was good news. Let's see. Um, I got anything onto the. So how the document will be used. So once we've gotten through all of the system analysis to, to find out what our deficiencies are, the goal is to come up with a list of capital improvement projects to improve the sewer system. And then we take those projects and we, in the last chapter of the plan, we use to do our financial analysis, which helps us develop our utility rates. This plan had a conveyance project focus because we did the facility plan for the treatment plant in 2021. So we included all of those projects that were identified in that facility plan in the financial analysis for this Comprehensive Sewer Plan. We also use this document to document our results. So when engineer comes in and they're going to take one of the projects off the list and then deliver it, they can see how we came to our results and why the project is needed and what the assumptions are. Sometimes things change, right? So, but it's good to know what those were when we, we determined that we needed the project. The system analysis helps inform future development. So our engineers who are doing development review, we provide mapping as part of this this project that helps us map out where our deficiencies are in the system. So if somebody comes in with a project and they are going to increase flows into the system, we can tell them where, whether or not we can accommodate them or whether we need them to do some improvements. A couple of other things that's important is one of the benefits of doing the plan is that it, at least for the conveyance project, if Ecology has approved your plan, then you don't have to go back to them to review the project before it goes out to construction for the conveyance projects. And this is pipelines and pump stations, not necessarily, not the treatment plants. But for most conveyance projects, we don't have to go back to them for a review. So that helps us facilitate and, and move quicker to get our projects done. And then the other, probably most important, a robot, a robust comp plan can help obtain funding on our projects, so grants and funds, which we definitely need. Or grants and loans, excuse me. So the first things that we do when we're doing the plan development is we set the planning horizons and we chose a 10-year and 20-year planning horizon. We had to do a review of all the regulations and standards, including our own standards. You know, we had, we had a consultant help us with this document. And so we had to give them the information that essentially defines what is a deficiency in our system so that they can tell us where those are and then come up with solutions to fix them, right? So some of the tasks that were involved in that, that system analysis, for the long-term planning, we looked at population forecasting. So the population growth translates into how much additional sanitary sewer flow is going to end up coming into our system in the future. And so we followed the facility plan, which followed the city comp plan for those numbers. We also updated our rainfall series, which is really important, especially for the, the combined system or combined system in the north, separated in the south, although it also does affect flows in the, the south end, but I won't go into too much technical stuff. We did nine months of flow monitoring, temporary flow monitoring for this project. So we had quite a bit of flow monitoring data for the north end because we'd done a lot of projects in the combined system. But we didn't really have a lot of information in the separated system at the south end of town. And so we did, we, we had a company that was a sub to our consultant go out and put like 30 meters out in the system. And that flow monitoring is what we do, and this is standard practice. That's how you calibrate your sewer model, your hydraulic model. And the update of the sewer model was one of the bigger tasks as part of this project. So we got an updated model with this project as one of the deliverables, as well as the plan. So a couple of other updates since the, the 2020, excuse me, 2014 plan. So even while we were, we were writing this plan, there were updates to Ecology regulations. And so we had to kind of circle back. And this was some of their comments where we need to include A, B, and C. We had these, you know, since they put a draft together. And so one of those is the nutrient reduction program, which that's still in progress as far as what our target is going to be, and that's on the treatment side. There were some updated water quality rules and that primarily affected our industrial pretreatment program. And so city codes were updated for that. And so in the comp plan, we just summarize what those are and where you can find them. So those are in the code. And then the other main thing that's happening is the CSO compliance, which is, there's no change there, but that's by 2027. And so a lot of the, several of the large projects that are going on in the next couple of years, those are for the CSO compliance. So that's to limit our overflows to the river and the Puget Sound to one a year on average. System analysis, so this is the list of some of the things that we did. Already talked about the modeling. We also had conducted staff interviews, looked at flooding records. They did a risk and resiliency analysis, which is where they look at, they develop a list of what our critical assets are. And then, and then they compare them. So you get, end up with this matrix where, with different threats to the system. And so most of, most of them, the threats are natural disaster type. So top two are earthquake and flood, which is probably no surprise. And then we did inspections. We inspected the lift stations as part of this contract. Our lift stations are actually in good condition. And then the treatment facility inspection were done as part of the, the facility plan project previously deleted. So for the 20-year planning horizon, so that's the long-term projects that they identified. We also, in addition, looked at population growth, climate change, and then continued pipeline degradation. So the condition of the pipe continues to get worse as it ages, is the assumption. And so I was hoping that would be a little bit bigger, but um, so these are the maps of the deficiencies that they came up with. So separated system is on the right and combined system is on the left. The red ones are the near term. So these are, the lines are all pipe projects. The squares are storage. No, sorry. Okay. I think there's a, a laser pointer somewhere, but that's all right.
You might be able to use your mouse.
Yeah, that'll work. And then the dots, those are lift station. So the red is the near term that we identified with this plan. There's some blue on here and those are projects that were already identified and are in our CIP, but they just haven't been completed yet or in progress. We don't show PGSF, but that's right here. There's another ball that's going in. This is only just to show the, the projects identified with this is.
My bad. There's this right here.
Oh, thank you.
It might work. I'm not sure.
So question?
Sure.
So I know we, we treat some of our stormwater like it's sewer because of the, it's not fully separated. Is that correct? Some of our storm, stormwater.
Some of the stormwater goes into the sewer and ends up at the treatment plant, correct?
Yeah. So is there, is there the direction to separate it more?
So our policy currently is to separate it where it makes sense. So we did identify like two locations where we could do some more separation. It really just comes down to costs. But at this phase, if a pipe, if the pipes are under, or yeah, under capacity, or excuse me, overcapacity, we need to do something, we just identify the project and put a cost to it. But what I was, so the next step is like, when you're moving forward, the project's an alternative analysis and we could look at doing separation as a solution. So we still consider doing it, but it just depends on the costs. And one of the main thing that drives the costs is how easy it is to get that flow to an outfall. So if you're really far from the river or the sound, usually that's a, you know, if we have to build up outfall, that's usually what is, is going to make it so it's not very cost-effective. Here's what it comes down to.
And then I have one other question. There's like a enzyme or a molecule that comes off the rubber off our tires? Is that something that's addressed in our treatment? Rubber compounds that are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that it does end up at the treatment plant.
Okay.
But I don't know what are, sorry. Maybe Ryan can answer the question.
Thank you.
There's a lot of active study on that, that I don't remember the correct sequence of letters, 6PPQD or something like that anyway, but there's a lot of study on that. It's unclear how much of that currently is removed by our treatment processes. And so I suspect that will eventually become a source of regulation to require us to do upgrades to come up with ways to remove it. And then hopefully also there will be actions to try to control it at the source in terms of, so that it isn't in the tires to begin with.
Thank you.
So just to summarize, so there are some of the existing projects that are in our capital improvement program that are also on the, those are in blue. The red is the near-term projects identified with this plan. And then the pink is long-term, so won't be needed until at least 10 to 25, 20 years down the road. So just to summarize, some of the types of CIP projects that we have. So pipeline, capacity rehab, replacement. So if it's a capacity issue, it's always going to be a replacement and up sizing. If there's a condition issue, we can sometimes reline it or replace it if it's in really bad condition. Lift station upgrades, sewer separation, like you mentioned. Storage, so that's more of a combined sewer system to put in a storage vault to kind of take those big peaks off the system and then treatment. And so with this plan, they identified 35 near-term and 36 long-term improvement projects. So we, the next step after that is that you have to schedule the project within the 10-year planning horizon and then the long-term, the, the 10 to 20. So in order to, to schedule those, we scored them all and gave them a rank and then assigned them a year. And so these were the, the six different categories that we use to score and rank each project. So system capacity, regulatory compliance, so like the CSO compliance projects. Risk of failure, consequence of failure. So if it fails, what's going to be the result of that equity? So we define that as underserved populations or low-income areas in need of revitalization. And that's based on the social vulnerability index for that particular location. And then site security, staff access and safety. So this graphic below is just the cost for each year where we assign the project. You'll notice that 20, 29, 30, and 31, those are pretty pretty high in terms of costs. And that was, so we had to push back some projects in the 2025 to 2028 range, just because there wasn't cost for them. So the exists, or there wasn't money for them. So the existing projects, some of the existing projects. some of the existing projects had to be pushed back into um past twenty twenty-eight, which is the current rate cycle. Um, so then having those uh existing projects and then the new ones identified that we had assigned for twenty twenty, those were kind of stacked on top of each other. So that's why you have these bigger numbers here. Uh, in reality, that'll probably be tough for us to just deliver that much work in that, you know, short amount of time. So some of those will get probably pushed out, but we have a little more work to um you know, go back and review and prioritize. And um every year we actually update our CIP. That, that's the, 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 the big update is once a year. Um, and so sometimes things get shifted back and forth, but um and then updated depending on the schedule. And so uh just to explain what this is here, so the, the financial uh consultant recommended that we push back some of the money from the twenty twenty-nine, twenty, thirty years uh back to twenty thirty-nine, twenty. That was arbitrary, but it's basically, we just need to push it back, so. So financing a project, different ways that we can finance each project.
So if you're able to and I know that there is a lot of urgency on some of these projects and it's very uh nuanced and detailed and it's a lot of work goes into this, best staff, I'm, I'm aware of all that. But with being able to push some of the projects off a little bit, are there any other ones that we can expand out just a little bit farther? Cause when it gets to like coming into a fifteen point five percent increase in rates for our customers. It, and then it just can compile the next year by a fourteen percent interest, like rate raise. It's just um, the cost is a lot for the community. So are all of these as urgent as like, are you at the bare bones? Cause I know we have a problem for paying things a lot of times just to try to save money, but is there anything in this? If you were able to adjust some of the other ones that?
Unfortunately, I think we already have by pushing projects back. So it's primarily the CSO control, which we're required by Department of Ecology to get that done by twenty twenty-seven. And then we have a project at the treatment plant where one of the structures is not gonna last that much longer, I think. So yeah, it's gotta, it's gotta happen. It, so we've already pushed back. That's why the twenty twenty-nine through twenty thirty-one, um, those numbers are stacked so high was because when they did a draft of this, um, those projects hadn't been pushed back yet. And then we found out, oh, well, these rates are blinking, you know? So we had to push those back and so um.
Um, just as a reminder, in our last rate period, you know, is looking at this current four-year period, twenty-five through twenty-eight. Uh, the uh mandated project of the combined sewer overflow control, port gardener storage, uh, you know, two hundred and fifty plus million that we are required to do by the end of twenty twenty-seven, no matter what. Uh, so as a result, we deferred about half of our, the rest of our capital program out into out years. And, and it's a, it's a risk management and a risk analysis and you're, you're trying to balance keeping rate growth under control, but at the same time not have catastrophic failures. And so that's, that's kind of the, the struggle that we work with.
Thank you.
And also just additionally, as, when we push projects out, they cost exponentially more.
Councilor, is that me?
Uh, yeah, and as I understand it, these are state requirements that are implemented through ecology regulations.
That's most, most of the time, yeah.
Okay, any questions? Councilor, Bill.
And even though there are state requirements, they're like safety requirements. We need to have the PGSF things completed. We need to have these mandated projects done for the safety of our residents and land or or else.
Yeah, and there's, you know, there's basic environmental uh benefits on, on these projects. The, the PGSF combined sewer overflow, it's a reduction of overflow during storms like we're having now. When we have these kind of storms, we have overflows at uh numerous outfalls. And that program will reduce or nearly eliminate those.
And then if we fail to complete these projects and we have like more than one overflow um experience in a year and a two-year period, I don't remember, then we get, then get fined?
Yeah, we get enforcement.
So it not only costs escalates through having to do it, but if we don't do it, there's an even more cost over and above the cost of doing it. So kind of like those late fees, but that's funny, but not, so yeah.
Councilor, Arvino.
One other minor point I think that sometimes get lost is that a bunch of this eight million gallons or so of um storage capacity, temporary storage capacity to handle these big events is implemented through structures that were uh modified but already in existence from the Kimberly Clark property that this council, previous versions of it, uh purchased uh some years ago.
Yeah, and around twenty eighteen, and we really appreciate the support cause that's uh been a huge savings than us having to create this from scratch.
Yeah, how much savings? You mentioned fifty million?
That, that's not unreasonable, yeah.
Could you repeat that number?
Fifty million we saved, yeah, thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, I guess finish up with your presentation at, at, at will.
Great. So going back to financing the projects, so uh utility rates and bonds are the most common way that we are financing our projects. Uh, grants, um, so there is some state and federal funds um that can, that will typically just cover a portion of the project and the opportunities, those are on the treatment side and for stormwater separation. The traditional sanitary sewer conveyance projects are not eligible though, so those have to come out of uh our rates. Um, and then uh, uh development uh or uh UL, UL ID, which is, is uh not very often you see that ever here because we're built out. So that's a sec, septic conversion type project, but uh development, so we, a portion of uh our funds do come from development fees. And so one thing we have noticed uh over the last uh few years, interest rates have increased significantly. And so that can affect your future utility rates. Um, we're seeing four percent uh is what we assumed in previous years, it's probably half that. There are some lower interest rates through a program called WIFIA, which is a federal program. Um, and so those should be pursued. Oh, and then um we do get some funding from our um wholesale customers. So um Silver Lake, Muckel Tio and Alderwood Water, um, they're, they've contracted with them. If it's a, at least if it's a treatment project, they pay a portion of that. Uh, so this is the financial analysis, so this is the scenario if we were to actually complete all of the thirty-five near term projects in the next ten years and the thirty-six projects in the next or the next ten years after that. I'll state the obvious, nobody wants to come back in twenty twenty-eight and ask for more utility rate increases. Um, but this is just also trying to um manage some expectations in terms of how long it's gonna take to do all the work. Um, another thing to point out is that one of the other um uh uh audiences of the plan is Department of Ecology. And we want to, um, one of the goals was just to convey that, you know, if they're gonna come down with new regs soon. I think we're illustrating here that we can't afford it, so. Yep. So I'll just uh walk through this a little bit in terms of what this shows. So the green is the operation and maintenance cost um on the bar on the bottom. And so that's just the cost of doing business and keeping um the system up and running. Uh, we have a little bit of existing debt service and that's the light orange um in left there. Uh, and then the red is debt payments assuming uh four percent interest. So that's your uh bond funded projects. Um, and then the blue up top is the rate funded capital. So that's what is left to go towards capital improvement projects um after we make those payments and pay those other costs. Um, and then the, the percentage, that's the rate increase and the rate, the utility rate increase over the next twenty years.
So I have a question about this. We're not the only city or county or agency that is struggling with these costs due to the requirements and aging infrastructure. We're still pretty well in the middle of our others compared cities as far as costs. I mean, do you foresee our other cities to have these same types of increases?
So I brought the slide just in case, but yes, um, um.
You knew I was gonna ask.
I knew you were gonna ask. Um, other cities and age uh utilities have been, ha- have been having to raise their rates as well. Um, but you can see in, on the far left, um, our utility rate for twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, we're at the far left end of this, we're on the lower end. And so some of these other agencies that are in the area, they're paying closer to a hundred dollars a month on the high end. And we're on the lower end currently. Um, at these rate increases, I'll just quickly go back to, but you can see the kind of the range of the utility rates. So the rate increases that have already been improved, that's in the, the green box there. Um, you know, by the end of the four years, we'll be up towards that one hundred or one hundred dollar mark. Yeah.
I guess one of the questions I had, do you foresee other agencies are gonna have to raise their rates too?
Many of them already have.
But similar to this rate, that they have the same challenges we do, we probably have more advantages and still instead of other cities. So I'm hoping that as a comparable city, we'll be able to stay in that middle range. One saving grace for rate increases, it's just not as much as the next city, right? I mean, trying to put a little silver lining on the, on the rate increases, so thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? Okay, did you have anything more?
Just the last, this is the last slide is just some of the um strategies that we can do to reduce, to bring the bottom line or the top line down, right? Um, to reduce the costs, so I already mentioned grant saloons. Doing our alternative analysis to come up with the most cost effective projects, refining those costs, confirming our priorities so that we can, you know, if we have to push things out. Um, and then strategic scheduling of projects, so um it's good to have shovel ready projects in case there's better conditions um in the future. Um, and sometimes even when you bid the project, uh, that's another strategy. Um, and then in-house design and construction, uh particularly with the design, construction, there's um more barriers to be able to do that in, in-house because of the procurement laws, the limit is three hundred thousand dollars. That we can do in-house, uh, if it's above that, it has to be um bid uh to go out, outside, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, one more, Councilor Vogli.
I didn't know we were done, so I do have a question.
Well, we're not yet, after your questions, we might.
And then as a comment, while I'm looking for my question, um, this presentation has to do with like six thick three-ring binders, right, that are up in council chambers?
So there's two copies, that's why there's six.
Three.
But the first one is the main part of the document and the other two are appendices, so.
Just letting everybody know that while this may have been a bit lengthy, go read the three and that's.
It's over two thousand pages.
Yeah, so we got lucky tonight, folks. Um, earlier you mentioned separated systems and maybe this is weeds, but so like I live in South Everett and I get two water bills. I get one from Uncle Tio, people here have heard about it multiple times, one from Uncle Tio and one from the city of Everett. And uh Ryan knows about it, you, I almost brought my bills because I got two different. Um, and here's what we're doing about rates today, rate payer. Um, and that's what I was looking for. Anyways, my question is, what do you mean by separated system? Is that, what do you mean by separated system?
Yeah, so it just means that there's literally separate pipes for the storm versus the sewer. Whereas in the north end in our combined system, they all go into the same pipe.
Okay, so it, that doesn't have to do with how Muckel Tio um wastewater treatment, whatever is combined or separated from the city of Everett. So I'm just putting that out there, okay? That was my big question. Think that might have been my only question. It is very interesting and I'm just really thankful that I've had all of these years to like learn about all of this stuff. And so it wasn't all brand new. And just like I was going back and looking at various slideshows from previous years and seeing that we are continually raising our rates, cause that's what happens in this world in America. Prices go up, um, but as was mentioned a bit earlier, we're still in the zone of not the most expensive. And actually one of even the cheapest. Um, but another thing that I was noticing, and so this may turn into a question, I just haven't formulated it yet. There's a lot of um, the rates go up, period, we see that. Um, but even in like the twenty twenty-one rate period increase, um there's a lot of recalculations in red. Like have these kind of, have the rates kind of gone up double, not double in percentage wise, but like have rates gone up over and above what we thought they would two years ago for let's say twenty twenty-four? Have we increased multiple times?
Yeah.
Can you help me understand? I know that rates go up and it's lame for everybody involved.
Each, each time we bring a rate ordinance forward for a four-year period, you know, it represents the analysis at that time. Um, and the, the steepness or flatness of those increases is really driven by the regulatory environment and just the age of our systems. And so this current four-year period that we're in now is probably one of the most difficult ever because of the port gardener storage facility and the combined sewer overflow uh requirement, the agreed order with ecology. Because that's uh, you know, two hundred and fifty million overall over multiple projects over that to achieve that in the timeframe that we have to achieve it, so. So it's particularly tough period.
And I think like we've gone up five percent, five percent, six percent, four percent, five percent, but now we're looking at thirteen, twelve, twelve, fifteen percent, which is just heart wrenching, but.
The, the other big factor there really is a return from a historically low inflationary period to a very significant inflationary period. And so we saw construction costs uh up forty percent over the last, since like twenty eighteen. So that, that factored in and that's a, that's a huge impact for a system where our costs are largely driven by capital project costs.
And then one more thing is our hundred-year uh weather episodes that um should happen every hundred years are happening more frequently and which puts more burden on our system, which makes what we have even more necessary to improve and not kick down. So go rates.
I have a one percent chance of one of those every year.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, thank you very much for the briefing um before the council is item thirty-two. Briefing is complete, is their motion.
So move. Second.
Motion and second's been made, are any more discussion? Okay, thank you, clerk, please take your role.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
Councilmember Tuwi?
Yes.
Vice President Zerlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes, okay, um, we had, uh, we now have item thirty-three. And I've assigned council bill two, five, one, two, dash eighty-seven. Uh, first and second reading, the third reading will be December. Uh, first and second reading, the third reading will be December 17th, 2025. Um, question for our city attorneys. Yes, ma'am.
Um, the agenda says that the sewer plan action is actually for next week.
Oh, I'm, okay. Can we pass it now? We just did. Usually if we, a resolution doesn't need an extra reading.
Normally it doesn't. I'm not aware if there's anything specific for this particular plan. Nope. Yeah.
So, so we didn't need another reading. We had a great briefing. And so, okay, we're good. Thank you. One less item off the, the end of the month. Thank you for the clarification. Um, okay. Item number 33. Um, I've assigned council bill 2512-87. First and second reading, third reading, December 17th, 25. Question for a city attorney. Do we need to read the resolution? It has not been made the agenda. So do we need to read the, the resolution for the record?
Because we're going to vote on it next week, we can publish it and like normal. So I don't, we don't need to read the whole bill into the record.
Okay. Um, how about, um, we could, uh, read a portion of it, uh, maybe the whereas's and you want to give us a summary? Sorry.
I can give a.
Okay. I'm going to pass that on.
A summary kind of of what it does. So it's looking at the time period where, um, right now with our the sewer and the water bill are not quite in alignment for the due dates and some of the elements. So this kind of puts them in alignment. And then, um, it also gives a little bit more grace instead of the 20th day. Of it being due and falling delinquent, it changes it to the 28th day. So that allows still for some time um, to get that final payment in before it starts, um, assessing a late fee for the next generation of the bill. Uh, and then the, it says that, uh, you have to remain delinquent for 30 days before, um, shut off of water and those really, really expensive like door tags that they, they put out there. So it, it gives that grace period there. Currently, um, it's in a 20 day billing, um, cycle. So they generate the bill on the first. And then by the, uh, 20 days later, it is due. So it doesn't give you a 30 day to pay your bill. You have 20 days from the date that the bill is issued. And then, uh, a couple of days after that, you get a notice. The five dollar late fee and, uh, then you have not, I don't quite remember how many days after that the door hanger goes on, but that's a $52 fee on top of that. Uh, and so essentially by the time you're not even that much past due before you get that huge fee for the door hanger. And so I went through the numbers with, um, Ryan SASS and it was have to remember the timeframe that he said.
Okay. Um, for the rapper, I don't, um, I just want to make sure too, since it's long night, I'll jump in here while you're doing that. It is ordinance. And, and technic, and the language is related to due dates for utility billing amending EMC 14.04.160 14.16.650 14.16.660 and 14.16.700. I just want to read that into the record. So we will know. Yeah.
The note I was saying that we were discussing was that on day 37, uh, from the date the bill was issued. So that's technically 17 days, um, afterwards. So if you were of when it was due, that you would get the really, really expensive bill. So you, you're not actually delinquent very long before you get that $52 door hanger. Correct? That was the conversation we had. And day 37 is from the date of the billing. So you're not delinquent for 37 days. You are delinquent for 17 days. Correct?
That, that's about right.
Yeah. And having a bunch of, uh, of our constituents writing in and telling us about their frustration with some of the billing, uh, and processes that we have and it being a little bit overly aggressive. Some folks came and spoke tonight. The I think that we can give a little bit more grace. And so that's why this ordinance I'm bringing forward and I leave it at, I would prefer it to be 30 days, but I understand with processing and whatnot. And that's why I moved it back to 28 days to give a little bit of grace. Um, for some of those payments to come in before generating that bill. But if Brian wants to provide more information, welcome to.
Okay. Thank you. So probably a decade or two ago, most utilities billed on a bi-monthly basis. Utility bills were relatively small and they were typically sent out on a two month basis. Um, and so there are still utilities that do that. Um, we find that as bills become larger and more significant, it's easier for people to pay them every month like they do their other bills than to have a bigger bill every other month. The, uh, utilities that bill every other month, they can allow and typically allow somewhere between 18 and 30 some days from bill issue to, to payment due date. Uh, utilities like Everett and has been over the last 10 plus years that bill monthly, uh, typically are in the 15 to 20 day range from bill date to payment due date. And, and that's fairly similar to, um, your monthly visa bill or other bills in that. And the purpose for that is that there needs to be time for people who pay it the last day or after the last day for us to receipt those. Get them, uh, accounted to their account so that when we send them the next bill, it shows that they've paid. Um, our concern with shortening that too much, um, too much past 20 is that we'll be sending a lot of bills every month for people who paid right at the end or just after the end and their next bill will show that they know a month's worth. Uh, despite the fact that they may have just paid. Um, we can put a note on the bill that, you know, and maybe we do that just says, you know, if you paid recently, it may not be reflected, but the result of that will likely be a lot more, uh, work for staff, a lot more complaints. And we need that, we need several days of time in there to receipt those, uh, and also to, uh, post those payments that come in or late, um, adjust billing times. The other thing that the, the late notice, which, you know, we, I certainly heard the message tonight and that it's, it's certainly not liked. Um, but one thing that that past due notice does is it gets people to talk to us sooner and to if they need help, if they need to be part of one of our, uh, programs to assist seniors or others. It gets us talking to them before they're way behind and before they have a door hanger and a, you know, a threatening notice to shut off water. And so that, that's the intent of that. We don't, we don't want to collect late fees. Um, I, I know there was a sense in some of the comments that, that this was a way that we were trying to build revenue. It is not a way to build revenue. That's just the cost of issuing those notices. We would much prefer to never issue a notice. But, but that's the intent of those, you know, whether fully successful or not, that's the purpose of those late notices is so that we end up issuing less of the door hangers and, uh, shut off notices.
Well, part of the, uh, ordinance also extends that out to where you have to be 30 days delinquent before you get the shut off. So that would still give that extra grace period. It just moves it down the line a little bit.
Yeah. We have, we really have no objection over that part of the resolution of the 30 days of delinquency prior to.
Yeah. So currently, uh, day one, uh, the, your bill goes out, goes in the mail, get it in a week. And then by, uh, day 21.
Day 20, it's due.
Day, day 20, it's due.
Day 21, it's, uh, it's overdue and day 24.
Stayed, actually it doesn't, it's not day 24. I've gotten it prior to that too. Um, usually about day 23, you guys send out a notice. Um, a friendly reminder about it being bill and $5 charge. Uh, and that's a $5 charge. And then it's not very much longer after that, that you get that door knocker.
Uh, they would, yeah. So the past due notice would go out. Um, they would receive that if, you know, by mail by 20, day 27, and then by day 37, which they would have also gotten another bill at that time, would be their, uh, final notice for payment. And then day 40 would be the earliest possible that somebody would be shut off.
So, and that's from the date of it being billed, not from the date of it, somebody receiving it.
Correct. It's from, from bill date. It's, it's due at the bill date and, and we have a, again, about a 20 day grace period to pay.
So my credit card is not, um, a shortened pay period like that. I have my credit card that I have standard day once a month late that I pay it. Uh, I have 30 days to pay my bill. So in my utilities that I've had where I've gone over those days, they do put the, both of the amounts on, um, the next bill, but with that grace statement, which you do put the grace statement on your friendly reminders that you send out. That if you mailed your payment just prior to the remainder, reminder of this letter, please accept our thanks. Payments mailed and submitted through online bill pay may take five business days from the mailing date posted to your account. If you have called us, uh, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so you put those grace things already on yourself, your thing, but you're saying that you think that constituents are going to be, customers are going to be more upset by seeing, um, the bill number combined than getting a $5 fee.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think that's the case with what I've experienced and talked to, but.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Councilor Bader.
Length of any of these timeframes, uh, does that do anything to cash flow and how things impact how the utility has to pay its other bills?
Potentially. I mean, the, the more of our accounts that are in delayed collections, you know, it, there's the cost associated with that, both in terms of delayed cash flow and the cost to collect. And so there is some impact.
I asked early on if there was any solvency issues and I got a no.
Yeah. I, I mean, it's not like the, the driving force of, of that, but, but it does, I mean, it does factor in. Go ahead, Councilor Bader.
Can you give us a sense of the scale of this issue or, or problem? How many people, what percentage of our customers are, you know, hit each of those at this time?
Yeah, it's, um, roughly, uh, we might see in any given a, uh, well, let, let me put it in a different way. And in a month worth of our billings, we might have 10 to 15% that go to the, the late notice or the reminder.
Any sense of how many hit the door hanger or hit the?
Yeah.
And if you don't have that tonight, Ryan.
Yeah, certainly a lesser number than that.
Oh, yeah, hopefully. But it'd be great to know what that scale is to, uh, of that. So, so we get 85 to 90% of, uh, customers get get it paid within the first 20 days. Is that, am I saying that correctly?
Door hangers. Five a day door hangers. Okay.
Five a day. So over the course of a month, 150 or so. Or shut, shut offs. Okay. So, but how many get the door hanger? But then about 30 a day? Okay. Thanks. Great information. Appreciate it.
Yeah. I have a question. How do, how does our system compare to like other cities? Uh, so of the utilities that are on a 30 day or monthly billing cycle, um, most of our comparable cities are in the range of 15 to 20 days from uh, bill date to payment due date. Tacoma is at 15. Uh, the, the vast majority are in the 15 to 20. Um, there's a couple, I think we found two that were like 23 in, in that kind of range. Any other question? Yeah. Councilor Zerlingo.
I guess to go back to one of the things you mentioned earlier, I think I'll see if I interpreted correctly. There, like a lot of these things, there seems to be a balance. If if it's stretched out too long, the danger is the person gets not only a, 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 a delinquent notice, but along with the next month's bill. And I think you were saying the concern there is if it stretches out too long, then that single bill is large and people have delayed asking for the kinds of, um, assistance programs they might otherwise be entitled to.
Yeah. Um, Councilor Ryan.
Thanks. Um, some frustrations that I've heard from constituents is that this bill is not like the others, that, um, other uh, bills that they pay on for their household bills are, you know, there's an ease to pay the bills. There's online resources. It's um, automatic on some cases, but this one seems to be, um, lagging behind a little bit and um, just using technology to ease paying the bill. So I'm hearing that things are, you know, being mailed and there's checks being written, which sounds a little bit out of date to me. Um, so I was curious if there's plans for um, increasing automation or just using technology for anything moving forward.
Yeah, certainly. We, we did go to, uh, an auto bill pay system, um, a large software, uh, development to, uh, utility billing software system that allows for auto bill pay. So you can schedule the bills and uh, we will, we intend to, uh, really market that and encourage people to use that. We've been a little reluctant to push very hard right now, just because we've had some bugs in it. And so uh, I think part of it is due to our network connection between here and our current utility, uh, billing location. Uh, I've heard from IT that they expect it to be better when we move up. Um, hopefully that will be the case. But, uh, yeah, but one of the things that's happened that's caused us not to want to market, you know, really push the auto bill pay yet is that when those batches are run, if we have a disconnect during the batch, then some people end up not getting their payment reflected. Others get, uh, their payment reflected twice. And so until we, we'll get those fixed and then we'll really push that out. Um, do you know their current percentage roughly that's using auto bill pay?
Yeah. I'd be curious, um, to go off Councilor Bader's comment about the number of shut offs and notices. How the percentage changes between, um, people who are utilizing auto bill pay and having and receiving notices versus, uh, mail and systems and paper and it gets left on a coffee table for too long. Um, what the differential is between, um, the percentage of people who are receiving shut off notices or delinquent fees. And additionally, a further equitable analysis would be, you know, how many folks are unable to use technology. So they're more automatically in a category where they, um, or more, are more likely to receive, um, delinquent fees and late fees. So I think that'd be interesting to look into.
Yep. Councilor Fosse.
It doesn't matter if you're an owner or a renter and using the auto pay.
No, I, I believe that it is possible to use auto bill pay as a renter.
Okay. Cause I've heard constituents say where they weren't.
I heard that tonight and I, I do know that it is, it is possible as a, as a tenant, there may be some added complication there that I'm not fully aware of and for a tenant that also has a bill going to the owner, a copy. I, I think in some cases we have. So, okay. So that, that was the scenario is if, if there's a property owner who already has an account and that account stays, the new tenant comes in and they're just on that account, they're, they're paying it, but it's still the owner's account, then they would not be the
They switch it over.
Who could set it up. Um, certainly they could with, uh, you know, unless the owner had some reason.
It's up to the owner. So as a former renter, I, um, I was not able to set up auto pay because the, the owner wanted it in their name. So it's up to the owner to decide whether they want to switch it to the renter. It's not something the renter can do independently.
Yeah. I don't think that's exactly accurate to experience I've had as, um, somebody who owns the house next door and unable to put it in dual names. So, um,
Yeah. Go ahead.
We actually don't allow, uh, tenants to put the accounts in their names, but they can get a login with the bill pay system. So they can sign in and pay and set up auto pay. However, if the owner of the property has already set up a online profile, that might, uh, stop a tenant from being, being able to set up auto pay.
Okay. Um, Councilor Vogel.
Uh, my big question is when the $52 door hangers come out? Cause I know I've never gotten one, but I'm looking. I've never gotten one, but I'm looking at my billing right now and um I've certainly missed some. Uh, so, okay, A, does it need to be fifty-two dollars and B, um does it need to be fifty-two bucks, really?
I I'm happy to explain how we come up come up with those. The it it's at about day thirty-seven would be the earliest that you would get a a door hanger. And the utility is based on a cost recovery model. And so everything that we do is to recover the costs of providing the service. And so the the way the fees are structured, again, we would prefer to never collect a fee um is that five dollars is about what it costs us to send out those notices. Uh, you know, modicum of staff time mailing and fiddling around with mailing equipment. Uh, and the fifty-two dollars was based on an analysis during our last rate study of what does it cost to have staff that go out and do door hangers? And so that's that's where they come from.
And then just uh when you get a door hanger, does that um, when does your water actually get turned off uh from the time of the door hanger?
Yeah, they have uh it it that final notice, day thirty-seven, they have two to three days to contact us to make arrangements to pay. And then uh otherwise they'd be eligible for shut off, which would occur no sooner than day forty in that cycle could occur.
How much does it cost to get your water turned back on?
Let's see, there's paying your back bill and your current bill, and I think there's a fee associated with that as well.
And then to turn it back on, it's another fee.
On the on the next bill. And again, that's based on the cost recovery idea that somebody has to go out and open up the meter and take the lock off and do that. So again, it's that cost recovery concept.
Okay. There was something else, but it just disappeared.
Okay, um, what, and we have a lot of questions. Um, cause there maybe a better summary for like next meeting two. I know kind of hard for me to remember all of these questions that were asked and answered. So I was just wondering if staff could help with working on maybe some of the answers that weren't provided already. In like a summary, it'd be good to look at, email to us. Um, so I know we've thrown a lot out and appreciate it. So um.
I remember what it was.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, and then I'm sure, I'm almost sure that if you call on that third day, you've gotten your bright yellow notice and you're like, oh, my God, extenuating circumstances. There's somebody on the other end of the line that might be able to accept that extenuated extenuating circumstance and help.
Uh, absolutely. What what staff will do is work on a a payment program with people. Or if they're eligible, work to get them to the programs that they get assistance.
I mean, it's not fun. I know I'd rather see a a five-dollar late fee than seeing, and I know I've gotten it before, a double bill, but I know, I know, because I'm reasonable that, oh, duh, I didn't pay it, so I'm gonna have to figure out my finances. And so whatever. Um, but then can like sometimes I, even if people, because I'm the person that calls, when I see four hundred dollars, that's supposed to be two hundred. You know, I call and usually I'm really nice because people are usually really nice. And um oh, where was I going? Gosh darn it. I guess it's late, but sometimes even the five dollars can come off. But so you were saying earlier about getting calls from people and some people call on the five-dollar mark and some people call on the four-hundred-dollar mark just because it's two bills at once, not because they've been charged many more fees. Um, there's a difference in um time uh given by staff uh to the five-dollar fee and the double bill.
Well, it's probably a pretty short discussion because the staff are empowered to waive the five-dollar fee and and we're glad that somebody has contacted us.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember um Fossey.
Okay, so my experience on the waiving the five-dollar fee, it only happens if you have a payment that comes in within that time period between the day, the twentieth and the twenty-fourth. And that's the only time that they've been able to forgive it or a one-time off fee. The rest of the time, I have not known them to do any sort of forgiveness. Payment plans, yes, um, but the forgiveness stuff, no. Um, my thought in this whole entire process, so with this ordinance, this is the last thing that I'll say, is um it does not seem like enough time window from the date of billing to when it's due. I would have preferred thirty days, but moving it back to twenty-eight days, it still gives that time period for those last payments to come in. And instead of five dollars just to mail out a late fee a couple of days after the twentieth, because you, when I asked, why are you at, you know, it's not even thirty days since you've given us like mailed out the bill. It was told to me, well, it costs five dollars to generate this. So why not just give them the extra grace period, the extra time, and then just tack on the five-dollar bills when you generate the next bill? That way you don't have all of these extra generations and and bills and other things like that going out. And then you could put all the notices just on the generation, the next bill. Uh, PSE, like they were also the next bill that goes out, if you haven't paid it, it just has the amount that's listed on there of the two payments that you owe. And that seems like a normal process to have. And then the late fee should not come, you know, seven days into that month. It should be thirty days or the door knocker thing should not be seven days into that month. It should be thirty days delinquent. Before we're shutting off anybody's wire because we are going into some crazy times that life is just going to be completely unaffordable. And I cannot imagine a better cause than for this council and the city to give people a little bit more grace.
Uh, again, we have no objection to the your proposal to add the thirty-day delinquent period time in there.
Okay, and then we'll have, thank you very much for the discussion. We'll have more time next week. So um, we're good for this evening and I'd also look forward to reading the ordinance, too. That would be be helpful. So thank you very much for taking all the questions. And if there is some sort of summary to some of that, that would be appreciated, too.
I'll just, I'll just add, you know, staff are working around the clock on flooding right now. So we will do our very best to get you additional answers and information. But Ryan SASS is leading the team that is dealing with the flood. So if it is delayed, please be patient and have some understanding. Thank you.
And we can always um review the the council meeting, too, at least this last part. So so thank you for that. Yeah. So thank you very much for all your time, too. I really appreciate your staff. Thank you. Okay, um, I guess with no further business, then uh meeting's adjourned.